...to the planning board meeting scheduled for September 12th, 2011. Our agenda is pretty concise and not very long today, thank goodness. We don't have any resounding consider and so forth, and we will have a public hearing then I know that each of you are here for today. I've called the meeting in order, and I think everyone's had a chance to look at the agenda today. Do you have any comments or adjustments to the agenda that you would like to bring forward?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Mr. Hughes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Castle, seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Has, have each of you had a chance to look at the minutes from our last meeting, which was August 1st, 2011? And are there any amendments thereto or corrections? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Mr. Hughes moves to approve. A second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify once again by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing regarding the zoning text amendment that we've proposed and advertised with regard to rooming houses and vacation rentals for Buncombe County. If you would, staff, either Jillian or Debbie, if you don't mind, please read the language that was advertised that we're going to discuss here today and have comments made thereto.
Would you like me to just go through it or read the specific language?
That'll be fine. No, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Whichever's more shorter.
What we advertised was to delete the current definition of rooming house and vacation rental and to substitute new definitions. Rooming house would be owner occupied and no more than 10 rental units. A vacation rental would be no more than two single-family homes with a combined total of no more than 9,000 square feet, which is rented for two or more days. And we introduced a new definition of vacation rental complex. That would be one or two single-family homes with a total of more than 9,000 square feet or a group of homes adjacent to each other that are rented for two or more days. And a vacation rental complex would be no more than 10 rental units, except in the open use district. And more than 10 rental units would be considered a hotel or motel for these purposes. It also establishes conditional use standards for a vacation rental complex or rooming house. The standards require adequate frontage, a minimum of 20 feet between buildings, adequate access for vehicular circulation and emergency vehicle access, approved water and waste systems, parking of at least one space for each two guest rooms, and the parking area would be required to be screened with a vegetative buffer or fencing when adjacent to single-family residential development, a limit on signage of one sign of no more than 10 square feet, a requirement for at least one bathroom for every four guest rooms, and lighting that is harmonious with surrounding properties. Within the permitted use table, the use for rooming houses and vacation rentals would be stricken. A separate category would be added for vacation rentals, with those being permitted in every zoning district. A separate category for vacation rental complex would be added, and that use would be conditional in R3, NS, CS, EMP, PS, BDM, and OU. And a category of rooming house would be added, and it would be conditional in R2 and EMP and permitted in R3, NS, CS, PS, and OU districts. The steep slope high elevation overlay district permitted use table would also be amended for vacation rentals. They would be allowed in all zoning districts. Vacation rental complex, less than 10 units would be conditionally allowed in R3, NS, CS, EMP, PS, BDM, and OU. And the protected ridge overlay permitted use table would be amended so that vacation rentals would be permitted in all zoning districts.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Katie, let me ask you a question. If today we change any of the proposed language, does it have to be re-advertised?
It would need to be re-advertised.
Okay, and our next scheduled meeting is next Monday, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we'd be talking about another public hearing sometime. Would it be the first or second meeting in October?
Probably the first.
Probably the first, okay. So we wouldn't have a lot of delay. Since our last meeting, we've had several emails from concerned citizens, and Liz, I want to thank you very much for your input, because I know you've spent a lot of time with this. And I know personally, I've digested it and looked at it over the weekend, and I think it was very good input. From the other citizens as well that have emailed us in the last few days. We'll move forward with the public hearing process, and I think everyone here's been through the drill. We allow each of you three minutes to speak, after which time, and I've got a timer up here, so I would hope that you try to wrap it up. When you hear the buzzer go off, if you would, just try to wrap it up. After we close the public hearing portion of this agenda, then we'll discuss what to do amongst ourselves, and of course you'll be willing, I mean, you'll have an opportunity to hear what we plan on doing moving forward. Well, let's go ahead and get started. I do have one letter that was written to us, the board, from Marcia Zerlip, that I will read at the end of the public hearing process. She was unable to be here today. She's been at all these meetings, and I wanted to read her comments as well, but I'll do that at the end of the public hearing process. Who would like to go first? Okay, thank you. I was floored.
But you want.
Yeah.
I have handouts. Sorry to be sort of overwhelming, but I didn't know what had been provided, so it might be all a duplication. I just don't know. I know that in three minutes, I can't say what.
I understand. Yeah.
But I'd like to say.
My name is Liz Wiederhold, and I am a vacation rental owner as well as a Realtor, a member of the Board of Realtors, and a member of the Legislative Committee for the Board of Realtors. Our Legislative Director of Legislative Affairs, Mike Buttram, couldn't be here today and asked that I present on behalf of both of us. Our concern about the current language, I've certainly expressed several times, and I've summarized that in a table. The first thing is that the definition of vacation rental doesn't align with the definition of the vacation rental from the Vacation Rental Act, and we think it would be wise to have those align. The vacation rental complex doesn't see, definition doesn't seem to align with the balance of the planning department's land use plan and the zoning ordinance as it's written. And the vacation rental complex definition is also addresses not what happens on lots, but what happens in adjacent properties. So it could, in those larger districts, create really pretty tight restrictions on those people who live in the open use, CS, NS, et cetera. Conditional use permits are required in this current legislation. I've spoken to several attorneys in the last few days about this, and the North Carolina Association of Realtors attorneys believe that it is in violation of Senate Bill 683. Did speak to the Assistant County Attorney, and he said he thought that there could be a legislative challenge. He has an argument that he would make that a vacation rental is not a rental. However, I think the Vacation Rental Act clearly demonstrate, demonstrates that it is a rental. It is delineated from lodging very clearly in the statute, so that is a concern to us. Ultimately, you know, we support the idea of vacation rentals in all of the residential areas for one person to have a single vacation rental, not an issue. But in, the issue is in those open use, commercial services, those wider districts, that I think perhaps inadvertently, the conditional use permit placement on those districts has restricted them. We understand the concerns of the, especially the Butler Mountain neighborhood and any other subdivision that has an issue with vacation rentals, but firmly believe that covenants and deed restrictions are the right place for that and not county legislation. And finally, we just want to ask that you reconsider and republish, and we don't want to be back here next year because the conditional use permit issue has voided this, and we're back here again and spending lots of hours. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. If you don't mind, state your name again, please.
Al Gunbert, resident of Buncombe County. This proposal to allow a business of short-term rentals of two days or more in residential zoning districts of Buncombe County is detrimental to our neighborhoods and communities. In blatant disregard of the majority of residents, a small interest group of property investors, property managers, and some real estate brokers is strongly supporting this proposal, which would permit businesses in residential areas. Passage will result in a large number of residents having the peace and tranquility of their home and neighborhood disturbed. Residents will be shocked to discover that the home next door has turned into a business. They will discover that should that business rent to a group as an event, or the renters cause a disturbance, a burden of regulation will fall to them. Most existing neighborhood covenants and restrictions do not address the short-term rental issue because it was never conceived to be an issue. Adoption of this change to residential zoning will adversely affect the value of existing homes and increase the desirability of homes in upscale gated communities with comprehensive restrictions that prohibit short-term rentals. I request that you support the interest of the majority of county residents and reject the effort by a small special interest group to allow businesses to invade the R1, R2, and RLD residential zoned areas of our county. By the way, the argument that covenants and restrictions are protection is a little bit off the track because it's almost impossible to change existing covenants and restrictions. And to enforce them would require that the objector hire an attorney and proceed legally against the person who is operating the business. I question the value of residential zoning if you permit businesses to move into residential areas. Why bother with zoning? We were told zoning would protect us, and here we're undermining zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gunbert. Next.
I would like to say something.
Excuse me just a minute. Yeah. Now, come on up, Chip. Come on up. You were first, and if you don't mind, we'll hear you next.
I'm Chip Craig, owner of Greybeard Realty. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for spending so much time on this. You all have been meeting on this since the beginning of this year, I believe, about eight or nine months, and you've heard tons of public opinion, and there's been a lot of time for public comment, so thank you. I think it's important to remember that vacation rentals were allowed until December of 2009. So the argument that all heck's going to break loose if vacation rentals are going to be allowed, it's going to be the same as it was in November of 2009. Vacation rentals are an important part of the county economy. Eight percent of tourism nationwide is tied to vacation rentals. I estimate a typical vacation rental generates about $40,000 a year, and that's non-lodging income, tourism income. My business, Greybeard Realty, represents a small portion of the vacation rental business, and we paid $225,000 last year in use and sales tax. As a real estate broker, I've seen firsthand the impact that this ordinance has on sales. There's several examples, specific examples, that I can give you of houses that didn't sell that are just outside the sea limits of Black Mountain, that are in the county. The buyers wanted to do them as vacation rentals, and they can't, so they didn't buy the houses. I've attended a majority of these planning meetings. There seems to be two folks that are opposed to this, the hoteliers and the folks that are in gated communities. Again, it's already been said, but the folks in the gated communities could have ordinances in place that would prevent, or restrictions that would prevent this, prevent vacation rentals. And the B&amp;B folks, I've talked before, in my mind, they do not all compete with vacation rentals. Our reservation is never, are comparing hotels with our cabins. And you still have listened to the B&amp;B folks and the hotel people by putting in this two-day restriction. I understand the concerns that Liz has voiced, and I think she has some good points with what she said. In general, though, obviously, I'm supportive of vacation rentals, and I want to very much thank you all for the amount of time that you all put into this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. Please identify yourself, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Bruce Berger. I am a resident of Buncombe County. In the interest of full disclosure, I am an attorney of over 25 years in the state of Florida, still practicing, still a member of that bar, do not practice in North Carolina. I know Assistant County Attorney is here. I would like to focus on the point that Liz made with regard to vacation rental complexes. I think it's abundantly clear from a constitutional and statutory perspective that any permitting would be in violation of the statute, and that the legislators were focusing in not only on leasehold premises, but also on rental premises, which have a less use level than a leasehold usage. The statute says to obtain any permit or permission from the county to lease or rent residential real property. So they knew that there could be less than a leasehold interest where someone actually has a lease in place as opposed to renting the property for a very short term. That was my first point. My second point in regard to the gated communities, they have remedies at law. They will have to hire an attorney, like anyone else who has that issue come up in their neighborhood, whether someone moves a mobile home in or someone puts something on their property. They have that remedy. If they don't want to hire an attorney, they shouldn't be asking the county to prohibit usage in a very wide swath. They have a remedy for their complaint. They should use the courts. Vacation rentals is a small business that is very lucrative for the county. Recent article in a recent editorial in the Citizen Times discussing that small business is the engine of growth in this county, and that is exactly what vacation rentals can become for some, not all. And I agree with the last speaker, we will not have an inundation of craziness and complaints. I think it'll be taken on a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else, I will read a letter that was sent to the board by Ms. Marcia Zerlip, and she would like this entered into the record, of course, and it will be. It's addressed to the Buncombe County Planning Board. From Marcia, it's with regard to vacation, our current vacation rental proposal. It's dated September 12th, 2011. She says, "Ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry that I will not be able to attend the September 12th, 2011 meeting of the Planning Board. In lieu of that, I have prepared this memorandum, which I ask be read at the public meeting and be made part of the official record. My comments are as follows. Buncombe County has a residential development surge, had a, excuse me, had a residential development surge a few years ago. People were enticed to come here with promises of wonderful homes in a wonderful place, single-family neighborhoods, and safe places to raise their children. And the people came in droves. In order to deal with that sudden influx, the commissioners responded by creating a zoning ordinance as a management tool and organizational plan. They also recognized that the people who came to live in those subdivisions should be entitled to keep what they were promised. Their solution was to create zoning districts R-LD, R-1, and R-2, which permits single-family residences only. This proposal will break that promise. It is the same in Beaver Dam. We had our own ordinance to deal with our serious issues such as lack of water and sewer, steep slopes, landslides, and erosion. We addressed those issues by making Beaver Dam single-family low-density only. Then the county staff came to us on the Beaver Dam Council and said if we wanted countywide zoning, we needed to give up the Beaver Dam ordinance. I specifically asked whether we would have the same protections under the county ordinance that we had already been, that we had already under the Beaver Dam ordinance, where vacation rentals and vacation rental complexes are, were not permitted uses. They said yes. This promise breaks that, this proposal breaks that promise. This proposal is simply not in harmony with the zoning plan. In actuality, it is like the extra piece you find at the bottom of the box after you've already completed the jigsaw puzzle. The only thing you do if you try to force that piece where it doesn't fit and where it doesn't belong is to distort the image. This proposal does just that. It distorts the integrity of the zoning plan, and it undermines its effectiveness. Please tell the commissioners that you have reconsidered the proposal and you now reject it. Tell them they should leave the ordinance in its current form. Tell them that is why, this, that is the way to keep their promises. Respectfully, Marcia Zerlip." Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, having seen none, then I'll cause the public hearing portion of this agenda to be closed. Now, it appears to me that we've got three options here, of course. One is to move forward as a board with the language as advertised and either voted up or down today to send it on to commissioners. The other is to sit here today and retool the language, taking consideration Liz's comments and Marcia's comments and others' comments as well, and recraft the language as we sit here today, go back out and ask staff to re-advertise, and hear this once again sometime in October. It appears the first meeting in October would fit the schedule in the event we could get it to the Asheville citizen and they would advertise it.
If you had the specific language at this.
Okay. And then the third option, of course, would be for us to reconsider the language that we have before us today, and take into account the comments from the Board of Realtors, the emails and so forth, Marcia's and others' comments as well, and come back here next week, because we are going to meet here next week at the same time at 9:30, and retool the language, and once again, re-advertise, and have a public hearing probably at the second meeting in October, and then at that time, moving on to the county commissioners. So I think it's pretty clear we've got three forks in the road we can take. And if I may, I'd like to hear from each of you and let me know what you think. Yes, Barney?
I've got a quick question, a couple of questions for staff. If we were to pass this today, when would the commissioners be able to vote on it? So if we, if we were to tweak the language today, they would hear it at the same time, possibly?
If you change the language, it would come, be advertised for the Planning Board, come back here first.
And then have to be advertised? Okay.
It doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be advertised twice for the board.
From staff's perspective, I mean, one of the arguments that we're hearing, and I mean, we can only use the information that we can rely on basically from staff, and that is what we have to base our decision on, but what is staff's recommendation or thought process with regard to whether or not a contingent use permit is in fact a permission under the new act and whether or not it would require, you know, or that would be in violation of the new, the new act?
We did talk to county attorney's office about this. Their opinion is that because the new statute that's been referred to, or the changes, is in the building inspection section of the code rather than in the zoning authorization section, that it does not take away our powers to zone and to zone conditionally. It would take away our powers to require anyone who wanted to have a vacation rental to obtain a permit from us, but does not change our ability to zone.
So in other words, you have to be zoned appropriately before you can ask permission? Is that their interpretation?
Well, part of, part of the zoning authorization is conditional zone, use zoning, so that something could be conditional, you would have to obtain a conditional use permit, even though it's called a permit, it's from different authority within the code.
Well, I wish Kurt was here, because I understand the argument regarding permit, the word permit, but when it talks about permission, to me, if you go to get a conditional use permit, you're asking for permission to do so, and I wouldn't agree. I mean, I guess that's what I'm saying. And I wish he was here to respond to that, frankly.
Unfortunately, like I say, he had a prior commitment, and Michael Freeze on vacation. But like Debbie said, we did have a fairly lengthy discussion on Friday about this. The problem is the piece of legislation is not written very well, so it just, it can be interpreted in a number of different ways.
Yeah, and I understand it's a new, obviously, it hasn't had a chance to be tested yet either.
We may be offering that opportunity.
We may be first in line. Michelle, anything?
I'd just share your views. I mean, permission, I wish they were here too. It says permission, and, you know, I don't know if you're asking any, any board, any anything for permission, and I understand what you're saying, the two different, the two different sections of the code, so, you know, I do think that the high density of the way that we have it of complexes and rooming houses needs some consideration, so I was okay with that. I think that I also agree that, you know, neighborhoods need to take advantage of, you know...
Thank you, John. Joe, do you have anything?
No, I'm, of course, going to go vote no on anything, but I think this ought to go on forward, even as I vote no.
I understand.
I think it's time to bring it to an end.
Kind of like we've discussed a little bit amongst ourselves, I think this needs to be heard by somebody with a higher pay grade, maybe. Is that kind of, Josh, how about yourself?
I think this is a pretty favorable proposal, and I'd like to move it on as well.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion or comments? Okay. Do I have a motion to move the language forward to the commissioners as it's currently been advertised?
I make that motion to move it on to the commissioners and allow them the opportunity to beat this dead horse.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
I'll second it.
Mr. Kessel seconds. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, having hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Nay.
Okay, we have a one, two, three, a five to one. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joe. Okay, moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is public comment. Would anyone like to come forward? Okay, I don't believe we have any takers. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Mr. Kessel, so moves.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hughes. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for your time. Thank you for all your hard work, too.